Heading to start the main meeting, real call please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Ganger?
Here.
Commissioner Yurkovich? Commissioner Welsh?
Here.
Mayor Warren?
Here. Anybody who wants to participate in the opening prayer and pledge allegiance, please stand. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we are meeting today to conduct business of our, conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and minds in a spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any addition or relations to the agenda?
I need to add an executive session to discuss real estate acquisition and financial affairs in the third party.
I so move, we approve the addition of an executive session for so stated.
I second.
Okay, has been moved, been moved to second, any other discussion on it? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There's no wards or proclamations, reprimandation of visitors. None of the commitments from the audience for not, for, that's not on agenda. Brandon Ever, do you want to say something?
Brandon Ever, nineteen Pinocchio. Just wanted to touch base with the commission and city on the East Chestnut Bridge. We had a little forum last week on it, had a lot of good noise, good feedback on that. Wanted to see where the city was at on if we've made any, any motions, anything worth that as far as outlaying some capital to support that east access point to the other side of the river. I realize the road leading up to it isn't the city's, neither is the bridge, but, you know, does bear a little responsibility on the city in my mind, so wanted to see if there's been any discussion on that, any thoughts, any updates? That's a pretty big topic and I know it's a pretty important piece of our history for our county and our residents on that side of the river, so.
Well, Nick and I had a little conversation this afternoon, well, I got here a little earlier about that. And I think what we're waiting right now on is the county is supposed to get back and see what the problem's going to be at, what kind of cost, you know, stuff. And wasn't that right, Nick, I mean?
Yeah, we're kind of just waiting for them to get us, because they have the engineers on, on end that's already looking into the issues. They're going to put together different estimates and proposals on how to fix it and what the cost estimates are. But at that point, we're just going to kind of wait for them to see what they would like for us and kind of go from there. So we're really just waiting on them. I think they meet July second to talk about it again, I think is when they're going to meet at the county courthouse. So I have not been told exactly what cost estimates or what they're wanting us to do as far as cost sharing or anything, so we'll just kind of wait on them.
Yeah, is anybody from the city going to be at the July second to represent?
Yeah, myself and I'm sure there's been some situations there.
Yeah, I was at the last one, I'll go to this one too.
And, and my question's going to be is that, you know, a lot of that, the bridge was damaged by, you know, these last two floods we had. And, you know, my question's going to be is what about FEMA? Can they turn, you know, something into FEMA, you know, like we do all the time and stuff? And I don't know, you know, that's a question I'm going to be asking.
And I don't know what the cost share would then happen to be as well, because we're having FEMA do with the whole debris removal around our bridge there on the East Madison. And that's a cost share and we've paid, I think we've paid ten, fifteen percent of the cost. Is that something that the county can look at for that area as well? I just want to kind of see what their options are, what their engineers are recommending. Plus, they're going to have to get permission from Brian Wells, because that is on Brian Wells' property. So he's going to have to be in agreement for whatever they end up doing, because it's not an admissible waterway like the Ark River is. Because it's not technically considered water of the US, I believe it's considered private property, the Walnut River is. So there's a little bit different regulations that guide that water versus the Ark. And so I know there's different regulations when it comes to that, but it's more of a private land over issue. But the county's going to have to work with Wells, because they're going to end up having to get an easement to go on his property to fix that. And I don't even know if they've had conversations with Wells yet, I couldn't tell you.
Well, as of several days ago, they have not, because I talked to Brian, so I'm going to stay to contact him in the last three or four days.
I just, you know, want to express my support for keeping that bridge open. I don't live on that side, but it sure drive a lot of traffic by my side.
Well, I live right there and I use it constantly too, so.
But no, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you. The consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. Approve the June fourth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting minutes as written. And number two, approve a resolution authorizing a public meeting of the government body to attend a public building commission meeting at five thirty on Tuesday, June twentieth, fifth, two thousand nineteen, in the commission room at City Hall.
I so move.
I so second.
Okay, you move to second, any other discussions on the consent agenda?
None.
Okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
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 No old business, new business, number one.
Consider first reading of an ordinance exempting the application of KSA forty-one dash seven, seven ITC, for all of consumption of alcoholic liquor in a designated area of Wilson Park during an Alzheimer's awareness benefit from three to eleven fifty-nine PM, Saturday, July twenty-seventh.
Kenny, you want to come up? He's going to have a little thing to where you're going to be at.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I'll let Kenny speak about the event that he has planned, but just a quick overview of what's being requested of you tonight. And just to let you know, we are working on a process that will make this so we don't have to come to you every time for a beer garden, but we're not close enough to doing that yet for his event, so hopefully this will be the last one we have to bring in this format. But we will need an ordinance of exemption for the hours that he is asking, which will be from three PM to essentially midnight on Saturday, July twenty-seventh, in Wilson Park. I wanted to give you a couple of options. Staff is not necessarily recommending these options, I'm just going to go over our concerns and let you guys kind of decide what you want to do. But if you do vote to protest tonight, I would ask that you designate option A, B, C, or some alternate plan that you have in mind for the record of this. The option A is essentially what Kenny is asking for, and this is rather larger than any garden I'm aware of that we've done in Wilson Park for an event. What I essentially did was took the perimeter that has been used in the past for concerts at the park, for Arcalala, for Prairie Fest, and we've expanded it into a portion of the tennis courts area that's been used for parking lately. And that's because he's going to have a cornhole tournament event going on here, and he's, he would like that to be within the perimeter of open carry. So this is, you know, a fairly large perimeter that would have to be fenced and monitored. And I explained to him, you know, what the challenges that are, so I'll let him address what his plans may be for that. The other aspect to consider tonight is that this is been drawn up in ordinance format similar to how the Arcalala concert was. It is not like the beer garden for Taco Lala or this Friday's summer solstice event. This beer garden as presented would allow people under the age of twenty-one to be within the perimeter. It would require wristband identification so that they can track people who are of a legal age. And of course, alcohol would not be able to leave the perimeter of the beer garden, but he is requesting that you consider allowing people of all ages to be within this perimeter area and obviously within the rotunda for the events going on there. So if you do not want that, you will have to amend the ordinance to restrict access to twenty-one and above as we've done with the two prior beer gardens. Option B is, like I said, the traditional pattern that we've used for the concerts. It restricts the area to what I consider to be slightly more manageable with volunteers and private security. The big concern I had, and I expressed to him, is you've got fencing here and here, but you've basically got a choke point where that sidewalk comes out. And he's proposing to, you know, keep that blocked as well. So I have kind of some concerns about what the traffic flow is going to look like going through there. And also as to where, with this big of a perimeter, you're going to have to have, I think, a couple of entrance points at least, just for practical reasons. So you've got to be able to man those and have the security presence that you need for this to make sure that proper enforcement is going on. So this to me seemed a little simpler than that, because we have done this before and have not had issues that I'm aware of. And if that's still too much, option C is the exact same perimeter that we're going to be using Friday night for summer solstice. So it really comes down to what size of scope do you want to see for this event? And, you know, the issue of the age limit. Chief Ward is here and he can address any concerns he may have. But mainly, I just want to let Kenny kind of talk to you about what he'd want to do, and these are the options that we came up with.
Can you show me B again?
Oh, and I should mention, bottle service, I believe, is, you've talked to them, so they would be maintaining this. But I think he's also going to have some wine tasting, was it Wheat State?
What about?
Wheat State and Kepner's Wine Tasting too.
Wheat State on a river, yeah. On a river, Brian.
Well, maybe Versado wines too.
So basically all that would have to be within the perimeter, so you're going to need a certain amount of space to accommodate that. But my understanding is, you know, bottle service will do their bar setup as we've done traditionally.
Do you have a recommendation, Andrew?
I have a recommendation.
Okay.
But it's one of those that I guess I'm.
I didn't, what was the question? I didn't hear.
Recommendation of which, of which one of these options would Andrew recommend? And I have a recommendation, which is going to be at odds with the, with the police chief. I'm an individual that I've always liked the festival type atmosphere where you can move around, have a drink if you'd like to. And if you keep it where it's family enough, you can kind of police yourselves, but you're going to have private security there.
Yeah, I, let me.
And you're going to have individuals.
Let me add something to this. It's not just about devout liquor. I mean, it's the fifty anniversary of devout liquor, but it's more about three other things. My parents, Alzheimer's disease, and the city of Arc City. I don't care what business you're in, if you've been supported for fifty years, that says something positive about this community. Hence, a party. Furthermore, my parents, they had to build some very positive relationships with the community. Dad's gone, mom's still here, she has dementia. What better way is there to let people know how devastating Alzheimer's is, all right? Being that I've decided to do that along with some other help, you can see on here, I don't, it's not about everyone twenty-one years old and older. Arc City Cheerleaders is going to be there, Kids Act chorus, these are like nine, eight, you know, ten-year-old kids. I'm going to have a water slide there. We'll have Arc City Dance there. I'm going to bring in residents from the Manor, residents from Aldebrook where my mother is, and residents from, oh goodness.
Weston Manor?
Weston Manor?
Yes.
Weston Manor.
But there's a third one I'll skip, but I'm going to bring, I've already spoken to all the directors of the place.
Windsor.
So that's going to, we're going to feed them. So the crowd we have from three o'clock till, say, eight o'clock, we're going to have a responsible crowd. And I realize it's, we're talking alcohol, but we're still going to have a responsible crowd. And I realize that later it may get a little bit hectic. I've spoken with Matt Stone at the college, I spoke to him again today, and he said that he's, he's pretty sure that he will be able to get more security. Furthermore, on option A, my, from that, the cornhole tournament, once it's completed, we can shut off that gate. That eliminates a lot more space that needs to be secured.
Right, and I appreciate that you came by and talked to me prior to this, as you were setting your event. Are you saying option A, Nick?
I think option A is great.
Okay.
I'm of the feeling that, I'm a person that I like to have a beer, you know, and my kids understand I drink a beer once in a while, but it's not like ninety-nine percent of the people are not going to get out of hand.
Right.
You know, they're going to want to have a drink, enjoy their kids, their kids are going to be playing in the park, but you want to be close to them still.
Right.
And I think that this is a great opportunity for families, there's a lot of activities for families, and I think this is, you know, are you going to have those instances where the police chief is going to be concerned? Absolutely. I mean, you're getting, it's going to happen, and, you know, you just hope it doesn't happen. But it's one of those things that if you police yourself and, and you monitor the situation and they have good security in place, it should reduce that happening.
I might add something else. I'm going to have, bring this water slide in and the dump tank, those are going to be removed by seven thirty to eight. Because things like that are where people get more rowdy, well, they're going to be gone. I mean, the, the company that's bringing them in for me, I told them they have to get them out of there by between seven thirty and eight. So that's a little bit less opportunity for things to get bad, if you will.
I think you have an excellent list of activities going, and you've had the whole family.
Pickleball as well.
What?
Pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah.
And.
It's hard to play that one handed.
I, you know, I, I appreciate this, and I, I was wondering what the whole area was for when I saw it on my packet. And now I understand what that extra area down below is, it's for your tournaments. And so is that where you're going to have your water slide and your dunk tank too?
The dunk tank is so all you all can spend some money and dump me in the water and all that might go to Alzheimer's Association.
Well, we might do that.
Yeah, I know, but I hope so.
I kind of like, I was leaning towards the smaller area, but with what you have in doing, I could see why you need the other one too, so.
I mean, with cornhole, it's almost a given, if you're going to raise money, those guys want to have the bag in one hand and a beer in the other. And obviously, it takes a lot of space.
But, but the cornhole tournament's for anybody, right? Cornhole tournament's for anybody, 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 yeah.
The way that's set, well.
I mean, pay the entry fee, so.
Underage, then we weren't going to, we'd put them in a separate area, but if we get this approved, we won't have to worry about that. But I, I don't see someone underage wanting to play. If so, I'm still going to have another set of boards out in the parks where they can play.
My recommendation though is going to open up the door to more requests for similar type events in the park. And I think that's a big concern for chief, because we do realize that this is a great, you know, cause and a great group, but there may come a time where we have a request where we may not want to fulfill this. And so if we make it where it's still required that the commission has to approve each one of these or make a special exception, then that's probably the best route to go, rather than just giving us blanket authority to approve all of these.
Well, we had some outside people come in, used our, down at Agribusiness Building several years ago, and it left a mess down there and stuff. So, I mean, I think local people, you know, it's probably a little different than some promoter coming outside, coming in, you know, type thing. It's, that's the way I look at it, so.
Maybe where they have to have a business, you stay.
Yeah, exactly right, exactly right.
Chief, can we get your opinion? Chief Ward?
Yes.
What's your opinion?
Thank you, commissioner. He did come talk to me and we sat down, had a good discussion. Want to make sure everybody knows that, just like I told him, definitely not against the event. I think it's a great thing. If I was a citizen and a partygoer, I would say, yeah, let's do this. But as the chief of police, my position is all about safety and law and order. And so my opinion is, I never want to see underage and of age mixing, because that's when you have problems. You're going to have people, they're going to be supplying people who are underage, and typically underage when they start drinking, that's where we get the problems. We did look on the schedule, have three officers assigned to work that night, so our staffing is very low. We're down two officers right now, that's a pretty good significant portion of our patrol. So having something that goes wrong can go wrong very quickly and be very devastating, so.
And you're going to have security there, private security, and then you're looking for extra security?
I don't, chief, I mean, I don't want, you know, people come up to you, well, just get your buddy to be there. I want someone with credibility, uniform, who knows, everyone knows that they're security. But I mean, last thing I want is a black eye for Arc City, a black eye for devout liquor, a black eye for the Alzheimer's Association.
Right.
So we want it done correctly.
Absolutely.
And I think he understands completely that most people are good, but you can't tell who's going to show up. Just like at Taco Lala, we had numbing members show up from Tulsa. Nobody knew that was going to happen, so.
Wow.
You never can tell who, who comes from different communities.
I, you know, I appreciate your time, letting me be here and talk about it. Obviously, I want it to be a success, so I'll accept your decision. Thank you.
Anybody have any discussion on it?
Yeah, Andrew was going to give us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, to answer, sort of answer your question, I don't have a recommendation, that's why I gave you the three options. But if you do anything less than option A, Kenny will have to dramatically alter the plans for the event that he's got underway. And to be honest, option C is probably inworkable, and he conveyed to me that that would just do away with the alcohol. There's just not enough room, so just consider whatever you decide is going to have an impact on what he's doing, but I don't personally.
Right, well, I assumed when Nick spoke for staff that that was the answer.
Well, I'm sure even staff has its, has its conflicts, but.
No, I mean, I.
You know, I'm looking at it from a, you know, I try, I want it to be where we are as friendly and open as we possibly can be. And I, I know in other communities I've been into, and it's allowed, and it's, it's very successful. And there are incidents where there are, you know, incidents. So it's just, it's one of those things that you just, you, the good and the bad kind of outweigh, substantially the good outweighs the bad. And I think in this situation, there's enough protection, I think there's enough interest for this to be very successful. So I think the policing is going to be on all time high. You know, I think Kenny and, and his, his group is going to be looking out for anybody who may be getting out of hand and telling them to go home. And so I don't anticipate it to be a, a big issue.
My concern. My concern is underage drinking.
Well, you're always going to have that. You have that at Arcalala, you know, honestly, I ain't saying that.
Yeah.
But even for age, you have at Arcalala, there's drinking going on, and you have kids that are underage, and you try to avoid all that. But no matter what you do, there's always that element that thinks that they can push the envelope.
Well, you did say something about wristbands, correct?
Yes. Yeah, wristbands.
Wristbands.
Wristbands will be required for twenty-one and above.
I've spoken with, I've spoken with Michael Morgan out at Arc Valley, and they have wristbands. And then the Wheat State Bottle Service will be the entity that's going to be there with the alcohol. They'll be checking IDs, and if they have a wristband, you're okay. If you don't, then you're not going to, you're.
Okay, thank you.
Now, let me ask you this question, is the public going to be buying the liquor, or, I mean, from the, like, bottle service, they'll be charging for it?
Correct.
Okay.
Obviously, this is, we're trying to make money for Alzheimer's Association. Bottle service, they're donating ten percent of what they get. All the other vendors that's going to be there donating their money. The cornhole tournament, forty bucks a team they're donating, we got to give out some money for winners, but half of that's going to Alzheimer's Association. We'll have these wristbands, which hopefully people will donate money. Again, it's all about positive, positivity, so.
One of the things that Tamara and I, I know, looked into, and Tamara just reminded me of it, is that when we look at our special event permit in the future, one of the things, requirements for that kind of consumption alcohol area, is that it has to be sponsored by a nonprofit. And that it has to be, those funds have to be going to a cause in the city which could help, kind of like the firework stands. You know, we require firework stands to give, donate a portion of their profits to that nonprofit in order for them to set up shop. And it'd be kind of a similar type of situation. So you don't have a for-profit company coming in and just trying to make money off of a beer garden.
That's, that's what I was kind of approval of, is nonprofit organizations being able to get an opportunity to do this kind of event. Anybody that's outside of Arc City, or like if somebody from out of town that wasn't Kenny, I'd say no. I'd, I'd want to know what they're doing and why they want to do it. Still. Well, I think that's the reason why you want to have, for, I mean, we need to have a vote every time when somebody wants to do something like this, you know, who's putting it on, why, and so forth, you know.
I think it's a wonderful event, it sounds a lot of fun, I hope it's nice and cold that day. I've known your parents all my life, and I must admit, they did card me when I tried to buy some liquor.
Tamara, I have a question, I may have a conflict of interest, because I sell wine to bottle service, so they may be buying my wine for this event, so.
Are they going to be serving and selling your wine at the event?
Probably so.
Then I would suggest that you abstain from the vote on it, if you could potentially make a profit from it.
Well, it would in a roundabout way, so I choose my asking you. So Karen, you'll have to bring up the vote on this.
Is there a motion?
Yeah. I so move. You know, I'll have, I'll have to stay out of it.
Go ahead.
I so move, let me get back to it.
Yeah.
If I can find it here. That's not it.
There it is. Page fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven?
Okay.
Okay. Get there. Dwayne.
Just give that.
Okay, thank you. I move that we consider, approve an ordinance exempting the application of KSA forty-one dash one, dash seven one nine C to allow the consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of Wilson Park during an Alzheimer's awareness benefit from three to eleven fifty-nine PM Saturday, July twenty-seventh, and I move for option A.
I second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Uh, it's roll call.
It's roll call.
Oh, it's roll call, I didn't see that. Go ahead.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ganger?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
I was saying. Motion carries. Uh, number three?
Number two.
I'm number two. I mean, I'm sorry, number two, I'm sorry.
Considerance ordinance requesting the Arc City Public Fund Wheat Mission receive with the sale of refunding revenue bonds for the purpose of refunding the PBC's outstanding revenue bonds series two thousand and nine, declaring an intent to enter into a supplemental lease with the PBC relating to the said refunding revenue bonds and making certain findings regarding other documents related thereto.
I'm just going to go over briefly what you touched on, but you can go ahead, Mitch, it's going to take me two seconds. We're moving forward, we're recommending Piper Jaffrey and company to be our underwriter on these bonds. Potentially, we're with the early call dates, we have an estimate, currently we have an estimated cash savings with the optional redemption period of eleven point three million dollars over those other bonds, so it's a quite substantial savings. But there is a process that has to take place, and that's what Mitch is going to talk about.
Sure, I hopefully did most of the heavy lifting at the last meeting, but the city is counterparty to a lot of these agreements. Most importantly, the, the leases through which the rent gets paid by the city to the PBC for the debt service on the bonds, and the indenture where the city has pledged to move the sales tax over to the trustee. So the city will need to execute the supplemental leases and the indenture, and also approve the bond purchase agreement in connection with the, the sale and issuance of the bonds. So this city ordinance accomplishes on the city's end what the PBC sale resolution accomplished on the PBC's end as far as authorizing the city to move forward with all. as far as authorizing the city to move forward, uh, with all necessary actions, uh, pending the achievement of the parameters that are set forth in the sale ordinance, which are the same parameters that were set forth in the PBC resolution. The, the city, uh, after it considers this ordinance, if, if it passes this ordinance, would be authorized to, to, um, execute all the necessary documents that it needs to. Uh, because the city is probably going to have a special meeting next week as well, in connection with the PBC special meeting, there'll be a very short ratifying resolution for the city's consideration, uh, that will basically ratify all the actions that are been authorized via this ordinance, and that will be it for the city's official actions regarding the sale of the bonds, and then it will just be a matter of signing all the necessary documents. So I would have to borrow the, the mayor and the clerk for the, the execution of the documents.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
All right.
We need an approval? I so move that we approve an ordinance requesting the Arc Kansas City Public Building Commission to proceed with the sale of refunding revenue bonds for the purpose of refunding the PBC's outstanding revenue bonds, series two thousand and nine, declaring an intent to enter into a supplemental lease with the PBC relating to said refunding revenue bonds, and making certain findings regarding other documents related thereto.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and second, uh, any more discussion on it? If not, it's a roll call vote?
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, hope to be back here next Tuesday, good news.
Thank you.
It will be.
We'll be back here, hopefully, or smiling.
But don't come back if you're not.
Wait a minute, he needs to. He needs to. Don't come back if you're not.
I'm just kidding.
You can go home now. Jeez, Karen. Okay, you know, you're kidding.
Number three.
I know you're kidding.
I couldn't help it.
I know you're kidding.
The neighborhood revitalization, uh, program, um, currently for this property is seventy-five percent incremental tax rebate for seven-year period, so that means, whatever the current taxes are on that facility, if there's increase in taxes up to a cap of five hundred thousand, um, that property then, um, basically gets a rebate for those portion, seventy-five percent portion of those fees. What this does is exempts that, uh, piece of property and allows it to receive a ninety percent, uh, rebate
Page two fourteen.
for ten years, uh, for the improvements. Uh, we have done this previously with another, uh, property, which was Westlake and Daughtry. Uh, so this is something we've done in the past, and the reason I'm recommending it is because the owner of the property, I don't know how much he wants to share or not, um, they have requested it, and they have presented this to their, um, financial, um, or banker, basically, or financial institution, and this is one of those, it's kind of a butt for. They really needed to proceed with the project, and the reason I'm recommending it is because we had these long discussions previously in regards to this, um, I am recommending for the commission to go ahead and, and pass this exemption. And, um, it is a property that has been vacant for almost a year now, I believe. Um, and it was a property that was very well utilized previously, however, it's been sitting vacant, and it's just getting more and more blight. And so it's one of those that they're re- redoing the property, it's not like they're tearing it down and starting over. So it's one of those things that I think we should probably try to help them as much as we possibly can. Do you want to share anything else, sir?
I mean, you're doing great.
I told you, I helped you out, so, I mean.
How, uh, can you, can you give us any?
I got a couple of questions, but I don't know if you, if you want to answer them.
Can you let us know what we're talking about?
Yeah, come tell us.
Come tell us what you're talking about.
Yep.
Harley-Davidson motorcycle thing?
You don't want you hand that to him, it's public record.
Yes, you know that.
Yes.
Remember that.
You may want to get one to that gentleman over there with the glasses.
Here you go.
With the white beard.
Give, give him one.
Well, they're, they're gonna do a press release this weekend.
Okay, well, they'll beat you to it.
Yeah, I'm sure. Just some of the highlights of what this company is, and what they stand for, and what they can bring to our community, so.
Are you Brandon?
What's that?
Are you Brandon?
I am, I am, and this is my wife, Sarah.
Well, the rumor's been going around about you in town.
It has, and we've let it, we've let it go.
You let it go? I've, they asked me, says, is a piece of ranch, I said, I don't know, and I didn't know.
I told him, yes, it was built in Kansas City.
Well, you know, we wanted to keep it as quiet as possible until, you know, there's a lot of hoops to jump through.
Yes.
And this is, we got our financing secured, um, hopefully within ninety percent for ten years, 'cause that makes it worth it. The project's a little over two million dollar project, so we need as much help as possible.
So on that, on your remodeling, that's what you're gonna do, it's close to two million dollars inside remodeling and inside outside?
Well, the whole, yeah, the whole project, yeah.
When's your grand opening?
Uh, end of November, early December.
All right.
That's pretty fast.
And actually, I went to one in Hutchinson, Kansas, there's only three in Kansas currently.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so it's Hutchinson Port in Manhattan, I believe, for the state.
Wichita's gonna open one, yeah, around November.
Yeah, we saw, um, so we'll be fourth, fifth, um, which is wonderful, but, uh, you know, my kids loved it, I loved it, and our fried chicken was really good, so finally gonna have somewhere we can get some fried chicken.
Fried chicken?
Oh, yeah.
And we're taking a step further, we're actually putting in a fun zone, but that's gonna have three individual party rooms, so it's gonna be for birthday parties, for, uh, group gatherings, or, it's quite a building out there, so.
So did, did you completely demolish the, not demolish, but completely tear out the inside?
Yes.
So just the shell?
Yes, my wife and I have a building halfway, so we want to make sure we know what we're going with. So we're, we got it down to the, the shell, and we'll start over completely, yeah.
Have, has there been a lot of, since the building was so old?
Eighty-six, it's not that old.
Oh, not that old?
Nope, eighty-six.
Is it pretty well up to date on all the electrical and?
It doesn't matter, I start over.
You start over?
I start over with, uh, sewer, uh, I'll keep the main water line, but electrical's all brand new, and the TV's all brand new.
How many employees do you expect?
Uh, between forty and fifty.
Forty and fifty?
Fifty, oh, that's awesome.
One, one of the things that's really interesting, when I went to Hutchinson, it was on a Sunday, and it was about one o'clock in the afternoon, and the line was out the door, and actually was around the, the building a little ways, and I'm like, are you kidding me? But honestly, it went very fast, I mean, so we got in the line, and we were inside, and through the line, and they got us sat down immediately. Uh, but we were probably in line maybe ten minutes, tops, but, uh, I thought that was really neat to see it be that busy, and, uh, still get you in there and get you good service.
Do you have comments on it?
Yes, that's what we're putting.
I do also want to point out, too, there's a sample menu in here, but, um, we are obviously looking at pricing appropriate for Arc City, Kansas. Um, we visited the Modern Brands, and it was like thirteen ninety-nine a buffet, we know that is not a price point that, was you Arc City any good?
Oh, I don't know at this point in time, we'd be grateful for anything.
I always look at it like, people will drive to Wichita.
Yeah.
For a twelve, thirteen ninety-nine for a buffet, and if it's good here, they'll complain if it's ten ninety-nine.
Yeah.
So I don't understand their reasoning on that. Is, is this gonna be very viable for you, you, I, it looks like you've done a lot of research on this.
Yes.
Talking with the city manager in the past about getting a restaurant, sit-down restaurant in town, has been very difficult. Have you, have you had that much difficulty to come in, or is, are the, the Pizza Ranch chain, is it easier for them to allow? Turn things up? I thought we got this fixed.
Should we start over?
It's okay.
What, was it pretty easy for you to get, be able to get the, uh, franchise through them, or?
Um, it, it's a process, I mean, they, they go through your finances, make sure your finances are capable, I mean, there's several steps. They come down and interview us, make sure we are, um.
Fit their brands?
Fit their brand, uh, who we are, and then we actually went to them for a week, and sat down all their heads, and interviewed, and we spent a week with them, and then they awarded us a franchise. They actually thrive in areas like ours, in fact, we're on the higher side of things, they really thrive around the seven, eight thousand demographics. So we're actually on the higher side of things, um, so they're.
So, so how'd you pick them, I mean?
I grew up, I grew up at Pizza Ranch in Iowa.
Okay.
So a lot of our family get-togethers were with them.
Okay, I understand.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you so much for investing in our community, and opening a business here, and trusting us to, um, help make it grow, so we appreciate that, and we appreciate, uh, you doing that here. I, I think it's, uh, gonna be amazing, and I'm excited for you, and excited for us.
And that being said, I'd like to make a motion to consider a resolution modifying the neighborhood revitalization district rebate for the blighted partial within the city of Arc Kansas City, Kansas, so it's financially feasible to remodel the structure for the new commercial tenant.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
There you go.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
We gotta, we gotta vote on it.
Any more discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'm very excited, so.
Can we keep these?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pass it out to everybody with the mask. No, I, they get a look at it, but I'm gonna keep it.
Right.
Yeah, the cheesecake factory design was the best, oh my god.
Did you do that?
Nick, you want to go to city, there's, uh, city manager updates before we go to executive session?
That, that young lady that you're letting out the door, do you know her?
I do.
Should be clever.
I wouldn't. No, she, she's been a good friend of mine for years, she's a good, she's a good girl.
Okay, updates.
Okay, next.
Okay, Arc City Community Band has two concerts coming up, seven thirty Thursday, June twentieth, and seven thirty on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, both will be in the rotunda. We do have a Pinky Cross City Employees this, uh, Friday from eleven to one, you know, being Ben Givens Park. Uh, reason we selected, uh, Ben Givens Park is 'cause it's the one hundredth anniversary of City Hall, and so we, maybe we'll take a picture in front of City Hall to, with all the employees, which would be kind of nice.
Do we have a meeting on Friday?
No.
First-ever Summer Souls Celebration will take place from four to ten, Friday, June twenty-first, in Wilson Park. And also during that day, there'll be a free swim in, on the river, um, at the Paris Park Pool. Uh, PBC meeting, which we already stated, will be next Tuesday at five thirty. Uh, Gordmans will have ribbon cutting, a ninety-eight in Thursday, June twenty-seventh, in front of their store here, uh, in downtown Two Eleven South Seven Street. I believe they're having goodie bags to the first hundred people that show up, but, uh, everyone is invited to attend. And we're one of the very few that actually will have a Gordmans in the state of Kansas, kind of like Pizza Ranch, which is really saying something about Arc City. You know, I wouldn't say we're dying, I think we're thriving, but that's just me. Um, so that's a good thing for us. Uh, County Sheriff's Office is gonna have a town hall meeting, June twenty-seventh, at the water treatment facility, from six thirty to eight thirty.
And what's that about?
I could not tell you. Um, they're going around the county to all the different communities, I think they're developing a new strategic plan, and so Dave reached out to us about a month ago and asked, and I said that'd be a good facility, I thought, for them, and, um, accessibility, so. Um, as I understand it, they're just gonna kind of go over what their process is and get input from the public, as far as, you know, what they should be prioritizing, um, not much more.
Chief, do you have anything about that, or?
Yes, it is, they are working on a strategic plan, they haven't had one before, so this will be the first one, so they're going around talking to the public, uh, not any different really than what we're doing.
Okay.
We're doing something a little different this year, we go around, I talk to the civic organizations, uh, but I'm also putting together a focus group, and I put out some invitations, we're gonna be doing our, uh, focus group meeting on July eleventh.
Okay. But, were they correspond with you guys, I mean, you know, too, I mean, on this, have you ever, I mean?
Yes, I, actually, when Dave came in, uh, I, he met with me and talked to me about several different things. One of them was, uh, strategic plan, and I gave him a copy of what we had, and we talked about, uh, how to go about doing that, so. Yes, he's had conversations with me for quite some time.
Okay, and, and like these, well, I'm not gonna say it, I mean, what happened there, you know, a couple of months ago, the high chase thing? I mean, is that gonna be worked through? We don't know.
I, I, yeah, I could not say.
Okay.
I, I would say that'd be a good, good place to go, if anybody has concerns about, uh, any of the operations of the.
Yeah.
that, uh, operation to, to go and list those concerns.
Okay.
Make that known.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, Nick.
Um, Chamber Coffee is gonna be at the Police Department, um, on Thursday, and, um, ten o'clock, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if you can be there, it'd be great, I'll be in the training room.
I've got a funeral that day.
No, that's not.
I'm sorry.
Um, and then we, let's see, next study session will be noon, Friday, June twenty-eighth, and then we will have a meeting course July second. Uh, and then, uh, the next Free Friday Family Film is Lego Movie Two, it'll be at eight P M. Friday, June twenty-eighth, in Wilson Park. We did have the, um, showing in Newkirk last week, last Friday, great turnout. I think they probably had a hundred, a hundred and fifty people easily there, maybe pushing two hundred, but it was a big crowd. Everyone was very appreciative, had a lot of people come up and tell us, thank you so much for, for helping them out, and, and helping them with the movie. Had a little bit of technical difficulties, but I think we got it figured out for the future. Um, but otherwise, it, it was the gray weather and the great turnout, and, uh, everyone really enjoyed it, so. Wish we could get the same turnout here.
Yeah. Don't know why, so. And theirs is out in the open.
Yeah, actually, it, it's, it worked really well out in the open, it actually works, that's what's great about that system, if we have a plug-in, twenty amp service plug-in, we can do movies anywhere down, anywhere, anytime, so, it's really, it's really fun. That's all I have, besides the death session.
Okay, so we need to go into executive session for ten minutes, Tamara, what's, uh, wording for that?
To, uh, go into executive session for ten minutes, um, to discuss confidential financial interests of a third party and a potential acquisition of real estate.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I second.
Thank you. I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
Back at what time?
All favors say aye.
Aye.
And we'll come back at, uh, what?
Just say six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay, and no decisions will be?
No.
Okay.
No action.
No action. Second?
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye.